Third, two thousand twenty-two, as this meeting is being conducted remotely, all votes will be taken via roll call. Liz.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Here.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Impamba.
Yes.
And member LaRue is running a little late.
Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the-
With the flag of the United States of America.
Of the United States. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
The Town of Burlington will be holding the February third, two thousand twenty-two Planning Board Meeting as a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-nineteen virus. As such, the government issued an executive order in March twelfth, two thousand twenty, authorizing remote meetings under General Code Thirty-A, Section Twenty.
Those seeking to participate remotely may distribute the following: You can join our WebEx meeting at townofberlincoln.webs.com. Our meeting number is two, three, four, five, three, ten, fifty-one, fifty-one, and our password is one, six, four, five. You can also call into the WebEx meeting and participate that way at six, one, seven, three, one, five, zero, seven, zero, four. The meeting is being broadcast on the BIPAT Government Channel. You can find it on Comcast Channel Ninety-nine, RC Channel Fifteen, and Verizon Channel Forty-one in Burlington. It's also being streamed on Facebook Live via the BIPAT Government Facebook Channel. The public will be able to make comments during the time for public comment. Questions can be asked via WebEx, WebEx Chat function, Facebook Live chat during the meeting. All persons wishing to ask a question or comment must identify themselves ahead of before asking a question.
Thank you. We have some items being continued off this week's agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to take item seven F, F, out of order for discussion purposes. Second.
All those in favor?
I-
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
It's my bad, too. Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Uh, yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Impamba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Item F is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a site plan fifteen, Adams Street, Senate construction is the applicant.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board Meeting of February seventeenth to twenty-twenty-two as requested by the applicant in an email dated January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
And-
Member Impamba.
To make-
Yes.
Take item seven G out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Impamba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. Item G is a continued public hearing. Petition to amend the zoning map to add a signed district for the town center submitted by the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee.
Second.
Motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board Meeting of March, is that correct? March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, as requested by the applicant in an email dated February third, twenty-twenty-two.
Looking.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Impamba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Great. Next, it was citizens' time. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that is not on our current agenda? If so, if you kindly raise your hand or speak and identify yourself. Seeing no one, on to announcements.
Sure. So, on February fourth, so tomorrow, the Sculpture Park Subcommittee of the Planning Board is going to have a meeting at twelve P M via Zoom, and I'm assuming that link is on the on calendar for those interested. The Zoning Bylaw Review Committee is going to be holding their meeting on February ninth at six-thirty P M, also via Zoom. Town meeting is currently scheduled for February sixteenth. It was postponed. The governors and the, you know, the state hasn't extended allowing virtual town meetings, so we're kind of- Where I know that Ken Gordon's been called, and so the town would really like to be able to do that, and so if not, we'll figure it out, but it's been rescheduled to February sixteenth at seven-thirty. A stated location to be determined, but it's usually in the high school, so we'll see. We'll keep you updated on that. And then the deadline for filing papers to run for the annual town election is February eighteenth. And so with that.
Thank you. Do any other members have any, do any members have any announcements that they'd like to make?
Um, I don't have a different announcement, but I wanted to expand a little bit on the Sculpture Park meeting.
Sure.
Let the public know that the Sculpture Park Committee is starting our second call for artists, which is pretty exciting. As most people realize, in summer of twenty-twenty-two, most of the sculptures that we have on display right now are going to go away because they were on lease, and we will be replacing them with other new, exciting sculptures, so it's a great time for the town, and the committee's very excited to start the new call. I also wanted to let people listening know, especially any corporate partners, know that if there is interest in any of the existing sculptures, there are opportunities for corporations to sponsor one of the sculptures, which then could either be moved to a different location in town center or even to a location at a company's site if they're interested, and the Sculpture Park Committee would be very interested in speaking with any corporate partners that are interested in supporting us and in supporting the arts in Burlington.
Great. Thank you. Um, we don't have any legal notices or non-approgals, no administrative matters, so let's move on to matters of acquaintance. Item A is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw to definitions Article Four Use Regulations and Article Seven General Regulations to define and regulate retail, commercial, recreation, retail, entertainment, and educational experiential type issues submitted by the Select Board. Who is here speaking on that matter?
Madam Chair, Melissa Tantaklas, Economic Development Director, and myself are here. Just quickly wanted to, we already have voted on most of this. You voted five-zero in favor. We had a presentation to talk about really reactivating some of the retail areas with uses that were more immersive, experiential, that I think was very much supported. It was reviewed by Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. There were some comments that the use table wasn't expanded, so it was kind of, it was difficult to figure out where this was to be, you know, how it was going to be allowed, if it was a no everywhere, or if it was in just in the BG District. So we wanted to clarify that with the help of Zoning Bylaw Review. There was some other super minor edits, elimination of the word etcetera and a spelling error with the word activities. But because of the expanded use table, we did need to re-advertise because it was broader than what we had initially advertised, so we're asking for all of you to revote the expansion of just the understanding of the use table, and that's about it. And we do expect this to be discussed at town meeting. The expanded use table will have to be an amendment from what's printed in the warrant, but that is about it. Everything else is unchanged from what's previously voted. So with that, Melissa, I don't know if you have any comments to add, and you certainly both will take questions.
No comments. You captured it. Thank you.
Great. I think it's pretty straightforward. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Nope.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone in the audience have any questions that they would like to ask? Seeing no one. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Uh, member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Um, member Impamba.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Who am I, um, whoa, member Gaffney, and member Gaffney?
Yes.
And my member Españo.
Yes.
One, zero. May I have another question, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items seven B through seven-
We need to recommend favorably or unfavorably.
Motion to recommend favorably on the petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article Two Definitions Article Four Use Regulations and Article Seven General Regulations to define and regulate retail, commercial, recreation, retail, entertainment, and education and experiential type uses submitted by the Select Board.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Impamba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Seven zero.
So now I'd like to make a motion to take item seven B through seven D together for discussing purposes. Sorry, I jumped the gun there.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Impamba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Seven zero.
I think we're going to do more roll call than anything else on this meeting. Item B is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point two Laboratories Engaged in Research, Experimental, and Testing Activities Including but Not Limited to the Fields of Biology, Chemistry, Electronics, Engineering, Geology, Medicine, and Physics Subject to the Planning Board, making the findings set forth in Section eight point three point seven point four of the zoning bylaws and subject to the- Applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health of the New England Executive Park Plan Development District Zoning Provision sixteen hundred District Avenue, BFLY, Operations, Inc. is the applicant. Item C is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point four Hazardous and Toxic Materials Chemical Use, Storage, Transport, Disposal, or Discharge of the New England Executive Park Plan Development District Zoning Provision sixteen hundred District Avenue, BFLY, Operations, Inc. is the applicant. Item G is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point five Generation or Storage of Hazardous Waste Limited to the Volumes Classified as a Very Small Corner of the Generator of the New England Executive Park Plan Development District Zoning Provisions sixteen hundred District Avenue, BFLY, Operations, Inc. is the applicant. Good evening, folks.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the boards. The record attorney, Mark Bond, here tonight representing Butterfly Network in connection with this application. Very pleased to be before you tonight, and I know we have a few folks here from Butterfly as well, including Andrea Hecavaria, that I'm going to introduce in a moment to walk through a quick little presentation just to, you know, talk a little bit about Butterfly. But in short, as you read, Madam Chair, in the application, we're here for a few different special permits for a building that is in the district. And this building is sixteen hundred District Avenue, which is the building furthest to the left. I don't know if Brady maybe could bring up just the overall site plan, and I can zero in on where the building is, but it's the building that is to the left of Tuscan Kitchen. There you go there. So, thank you, Brady. Appreciate that. So you've got Mall Road that is running, you know, top to bottom there, and then obviously the entrance into the district, and then as you're coming in, you know, after you pass where Main and Manny and Row Thirty-four, and you take that left, there's a cul-de-sac, if you would, down at the end where there's three different buildings. And the building highlighted in blue would be the building that Butterfly Network would be taking over actually in its entirety. It's a three-story building, about sixty-one thousand square feet, and they would be relocating their corporate headquarters to be at this location currently based in Connecticut. So they're a very exciting company, focused on digital health company that Andrea can kind of explain what they do. But the vast majority of this building would be devoted to office space and related space. They have a component on the first floor where they would be engaging in some research and development. They make a handheld device for digital imaging that is very novel and exciting. And as part of that, they would be doing some related research and development, prototype testing on it, and other features that would be happening in the first floor. So, and hence that did trigger the need for the special permits that we have applied for. We're in a PDD, the PDD zoning district, and under the PDD, there are specific use categories for laboratory use and whatnot that consultation with the planning staff and the building inspector felt that we would, you know, best to apply for those as we did. So I know they're very excited about locating here in Burlington, and there are no external modifications to the building being proposed. They would be taking over the building as is, so no exterior site plan changes or anything of that nature. So, but if I could, Madam Chair, if I could introduce Andrea, I think she had a very brief PowerPoint that she wanted to walk through just to introduce you to Butterfly and what they do.
Madam Chair, just for the record, I second those motions that we just made.
Wonderful. It's nice to meet you. I'm trying to share my screen here. Hold on, it made me go into my settings because I don't use WebEx as much anymore, so one moment.
Take your time. We also long for those days when we don't use WebEx anymore.
I know. I'm sorry. It's like I live a Zoom life, and it's, you know, the WebEx is telling me I need to go into my system preferences here, so hold on one second. Sorry about that.
No worries. We are short agenda tonight. It's only ten pages tonight, not forty-eight.
Madam Chair, I might add something real quick, just-
Please do.
Um, just some context. Andrea, I know you're going into this Butterfly as well, but from the town side, I know the Economic Development Office had met with Andrea, and we've worked with the Mass Office of Business Development, because, you know, prior to making the decision to Burlington, Butterfly had many options to kind of locate and just wanted to, you know, share with them that, you know, the town had worked with state reps, Butterfly reps, to, you know, facilitate them coming to Burlington. And we're excited because I think with, you know, the partnership with the hospitals, you know, the talent, the research that's here, these are net new jobs to Massachusetts, and we're, you know, kind of excited because also the auxiliary benefits for the local economy are going to be very pronounced, so we're excited about that. And we just wanted to share a little context as Andrea's getting set up.
Great. Thank you.
Um, I don't know what's going on. It's not letting me share my deck, but if it's okay with you all in the sense of time, I think I can just talk about it, and I'm happy to share it to the group because I know it's late, and I was laughing, Brenda, as you're, I think your child came in because I'm like barricading into the basement room here, so my four- and two-year-old don't come in. So if they start hearing that, that's what's going on.
I feel you, babe.
Um, but anyways, my name's Andrea Hetchavaria. I'm VP of Government Affairs for Butterfly Network and also the Chief of Staff to our CEO. I'm a native of New Hampshire, and so I really look at the Burlington community as very close to where I grew up. I, I, I told Rick Parker when we first started talking that Burlington, my mom took me to shop at the Burlington Mall all the time, and whenever I had like semi-formals, we always went to the Lord and Taylor. So I'm very familiar with the area, and I'm really excited to be back in the neighborhood. For some of you who don't know, Butterfly Network is a really transformative ultrasound company. We kind of call ourselves Point of Care, Next Generation Point of Care Ultrasound. You can fit it into the palm of your hand. It's like the size and weight of a men's electric razor, and you plug it into your iPhone or tablet, and you're basically creating an ultrasound system on your iPhone. We are the world's first handheld whole-body imager, which means you can scan the whole body with one transducer, and we can do that by leveraging semiconductors, artificial intelligence, and cloud technology. And the real value of Butterfly is its cost. It actually costs around two thousand dollars. And if you compare that to your typical imaging systems that are around in the market, your traditional point-of-care ultrasound that you might see in the hospital, that's anywhere from twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars, and then the huge CARP-based systems that you would see if your, you know, wife was pregnant or you're getting cardiac imaging, those can be north of a hundred thousand dollars. So we really feel like we're on the touch and the precipice of something here. Our mission at Butterfly is to create access to valuable clinical insights using innovative ultrasound technology, made simple with artificial intelligence to benefit patients worldwide. So we really think of ourselves, we have like a little saying internally, is that butterfly is not really out to make better stenographers, we're out to make better clinicians, and we view ourselves as more digital health. Yes, we are a medical device, and we register with the FDA, and we go through that, but we really view ourselves as digital health through the information that the butterfly provides. We are out to transform the way the care is delivered, and we ultimately are out to change the standard of care and be as ubiquitous as the stethoscope, meaning that when you go see your doctor in a primary care, or you go to a hospital, that in addition to them looking at you, taking your vitals, they're going to use a butterfly and provide a window into the body, and that's what we're really ultimately out to do, and we're out to do this across geographies worldwide. Because of the accessibility of Butterfly, now you're talking about bringing imaging to places that have never had it before. So you're thinking, obviously, underserved areas in the U.S., whether that be inner-city communities that don't have access to quality imaging, can be rural populations that might have to either drive an hour, two hours to get imaging, or their rural clinic only has imaging capabilities once a week. Now we can arm them with a handheld device, and then when you think about it at a global level, two-thirds of the world actually lack access to any sort of medical imaging. And we are working with phenomenal partners across the globe to actually expand our footprint in some of these developing markets that have never seen medical imaging before. And we have some really powerful stories internally that talk about how we've provided imaging and visuals of a woman's baby that she would have never otherwise had access to. So we really, we're very passionate about what we do. Taking a step back, we are coming to Burlington, and I think some of you have shared this story with, but we are coming to Burlington. We've done kind of a nationwide search looking for where we can house, because we are kind of on the precipice of life science work and then also tech. And it was the Burlington Corridor that kind of lit up on a map, and here we are. So we are, our original headquarters is in Guilford, Connecticut. We came out of what I call like an incubator. We were founded by Jonathan Rothberg, whom, if you want to Google him, is a well-known healthcare entrepreneur. He's actually best known for inventing next-generation DNA sequencing. He put basically genome sequencing on a semiconductor chip and won an award from President Obama back in twenty-eleven, I believe. And Butterfly was founded in twenty-eleven. We went public just last year, so we're going through our first year as a public company and working through that transition. We've had, we've hired about two hundred people this year. We've had a lot of rapid growth in twenty-twenty-one. We have about a hundred full-time employees in Massachusetts with about eighty of them being tied to the Burlington site so far, and we expect that to be right around the one-fifty number by the end of this year, and the capacity of our building in Christmas, or we'll keep me honest here, is about two-seventy-five. So we can hold that, and we also could have the opportunities to expand. We are just really thrilled to be in the Burlington area, and I want to just thank Melissa and everyone that we've worked with on helping us. We've worked with the Mass Governor's Office as well, and we're just really thrilled to be here, and we look forward to our growth. One thing I will tell you about Butterfly, and I'm sorry I can't get the image up because I wish you could see it, but when you think about ultrasound, and I think everyone's kind of had experience with that, is that when you go into a doctor, you see this thing that looks like it should belong in a cockpit of an airplane, right? It's got like this widget and this widget and like three transducers here. Butterfly is one probe, and it switches through three different phase arrays, and by clicking a preset on your phone, you can scan the whole body. So back in twenty-nineteen, we actually won an award from Apple about the simplicity and design of our user interface. So we really feel like we are, we are bringing this, where you're taking the burden on ourselves to make imaging super accessible and easy, because the ultimate goal is to make a novice like me or you able to scan themselves. So what we're after kind of right now is what we call Butterfly Blueprint, and that is our work with major health systems and hospitals. And when you access really, when you think about the full value and breadth of Butterfly in a major health system, is a doctor can see the patient at that point of care, look at them, assess them. They can upload those images to a HIPAA-compliant cloud, share them with other doctors, work through that process. They can send it to a, like a radiology pack for information, and then you can also build through that, so it creates a cyclical workflow. So that's the Butterfly Blueprint. That is kind of our enterprise solution in healthcare, and we also work with clinical hospitals, critical access hospitals. We're working with emergency medicine. We're really trying to expand any place you can get imaging, so you can go to your primary care doctor and do that. And the one thing I will end on, too, is that we're not just for animals, we're also for our pets and four-legged friends. So we launched Butterfly IQ Vet in twenty-twenty-one, and you can use the same butterfly, and it has a cute little paw print preset, and you can scan your smallest four-legged friend all the way up to a large animal like a horse. So we really feel like we're for all species. So I just wanted to keep it really brief for you all. I'm sorry I couldn't upload my deck. I'm happy to, I can email it to Mark if people want to see it. I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
We're really excited to be here, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions? I'm really excited for you folks to come to Burlington. This is very cool technology.
Barbara, this is Paul Raymond. This is, this is so good. This is coming to Burlington. This is really cutting-edge stuff. And for people to select to come here is a wonderful addition to all the other technologies that we have. And as she said, we light up on the map as a good place to locate, so a pat on the back to us.
Yes, absolutely. Vice Chair Gaffney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of, maybe a comment and a question. Comments just in general, not to the applicant themselves, but it's really, I'm really glad to see for these type of applications that we actually see and know who the applicant is, because I think that presentation, although we didn't see it, but we heard from her, I thought was very important to the board in these cases, so thanks for that. Question is just for the applicant, the handheld that you use, the hardware, I'm guessing you don't, you don't manufacture that there, you don't put the pieces together, they use a contract manufacturer or something, is that correct?
Yeah, we're not currently manufacturing in Massachusetts, but we plan to do a lot of our R and D in this space. So the bulk of what we will be seeing in the Burlington office is, the bulk of our C-suite will be there, sales and marketing and R and D. So you'll kind of see the whole gamut, and when I've kind of explained this to folks in Burlington or even the state of Massachusetts, is we really feel like this will be our epicenter. So we have a small office in Guilford, Connecticut, we have a New York City office, and we also have folks in Palo Alto, and we're really looking forward to the Burlington place to be that central hub.
Okay, so the manufacturer, the actual hardware, that's done by a separate company subcontract?
Yes.
Right, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member LaRue?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, just a couple of quick comments. Wow, fascinating. It was such a great presentation. I can't, I guess it could have been even better with your, if we could see what you were talking about. I can't, I guess it could have been even better with your, with, if we could see what you were talking about.
No, I'm like, I'm still trying to pull it up just so you can see it. This is killing me too. I'm sorry.
I would appreciate it if you do send it on because I would love to look at it. It's fascinating. It's very exciting and I'm, I can imagine so many applications for it. It's, it's truly wonderful. Um, I'm thrilled that you chose Burlington and I know you had lots of, lots of reasons to do that. But one thing I wanted to make sure that you and your employees know about is that building that you picked is actually in a fabulous location. Because right behind you, I don't know if you know this, there's a river walk and a little waterfall. With, it's a beautiful place to sit and have your lunch. I hope you'll enjoy it. It's something that this board worked quite hard with to get that set up with the, the owners of the, of the property. And it's a beautiful location. And so I hope that while you're enjoying all the many restaurants and all the amenities that Burlington has, maybe you'll spend a few quiet moments there sometimes on your lunch hour and, and check out the waterfall.
That is good to know. I mean, I know there was a lot of walkability around the area and we were excited about that. But, um, I'll have to make sure our folks know.
It's very pretty. So thank you. And I'm very excited that you're coming to Burlington. Great. Um, someone else?
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
Just a quick question. Is this, uh, device in production at the moment?
Oh, yeah.
You're selling it? You are? Okay. Wow.
Oh, yeah. We, um, we're, we're a public company. We, um, we, um, have been selling this since 2018. We're in 100 of the major U.S. health systems here. Um, and we are in 30, 32 countries globally.
Do you sell only to medical facilities or doctors? Or do you sell to individuals? Just, uh, really, we're a way out of that question.
So no, so for right now, we're only licensed to sell to medical professionals. Um, but our, you know, our, our, we have a, a vision that we feel like novice users should be able to scan themselves. So, um, you know, take a second to learn a little bit about the technology. You know, we leverage artificial intelligence, um, in hopes that it can, um, guide you, take a quality image. So the goal is to have someone like you or me or a layman be able to, um, scan themselves. And, and with so many articles out there about healthcare moving into the home, we look like, we, we really look forward to the day where Butterfly can be used, um, in the home. It's in the home now, but I guess at a broader scale where, where people can then upload those images, share them, um, with their doctors. Um, but right now it's just for medically licensed professionals.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And, and, and a great choice. Uh, thank you for choosing Burlington.
Sorry, I think it's going to be the baby shower gift in like 2020.
We hope that, yeah.
Okay, folks, um, does anyone else on the board have any questions? This is a public hearing. Uh, does anyone in the audience have any, uh, questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Can I, can I just ask one question, Barbara?
Sure, of course.
Before, I, I just thought of this and, and that is in that, in that area, in that corner, uh, is the, is parking the problem? Uh, it sounds like there's, there's not even going to be full capacity right away. But do we have, uh, maybe it's a question for staff. How, how many people originally occupied, uh, that building? Do we know?
So the building is built, um, and programmed for traditional office. Most of the district is and was. Um, this building being, um, incorporates a lot more R and D lab space, which has a lot less people in general for, for his kind of square footage. So, um, with that analysis that it, the, it was constructed to really look at the office proposal. So therefore with the less, less bodies in the building, um, we feel that parking will be sufficient.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry, Barbara.
Oh, no, that's quite all right. I made a motion, um, but I don't think anyone has seconded it.
Seconded.
It. Thank you.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Españo?
Yes.
Member, um, Impemba?
Yes.
Member LaRue?
Yes. Did you get it, Raymond?
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Thank you, Paul. Seven zero.
Calendar.
You have another motion, please. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Butterfly Operations Inc. Doing, well, B-Fly Operations Inc. Doing Business as Butterfly Network, Inc. Subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
Second. Second.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino? Member Españo?
Yes.
Member Impemba?
Yes.
Member LaRue?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Great. Welcome to Burlington. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We all appreciate your time and thank you to, uh, staff, uh, Kristin, Liz, Brady for all your time with us too. So thank you very much.
And Mark, I'm going to email this to you, so feel free to share it with the group.
I will. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. I look forward to seeing it. Uh, moving on, item E is a public hearing application for approval of a site plan. 26 Beacon Street, First Patriot Corporation is the applicant. Good evening, folks. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, good evening, uh, members of the board, Charles Myhaugh, Quickpoint Properties. I hope everybody's doing well this evening. Uh, we are back again. Some of you, both of you were here when we, uh, did our last site plan approval, which we appreciate very much. But, um, the condition requiring, uh, repositioning of the Conex and storage containers that were at the northwest corner of the property made us, uh, you know, rethink the, the best use for these areas on the property that we were considering. And what the property has to do most of all. So, uh, what you, what we presented to you all in this, this application is exactly what we, uh, think at the moment. It's the next step for, uh, for Beacon Village. Um, it still impacts the three areas that the original site plan proposal, uh, impacted. But, um, we arranged it a little bit and give us more of what we need to operate efficiently. So the front portion of the property where we originally had proposed putting the, uh, the, uh, compacters and that structure there would be, uh, left out to the, to, uh, kids on the property. We found that area at the front corner of the property by the entrance, we best for a new management and maintenance building. So we can deal with some of the, the storage issues and a lack of, uh, a proper leasing office that we didn't have before with the use of a new building at this rotation. And put it right by the front of the property where it should be. That being said, we put the com- concept for the compacters and put them at the northwest corner of the property where we currently have the Conex containers and an open air school, uh, container. So we're still going to use that portion of the property. We're going to put the compacters there where it's highlighted in blue. Thank you. Um, and, uh, they'll be covered, uh, they'll be an open air structure. So it's not a heated structure. And then the other corner of the property, the northeast corner of the property, yeah, where the compacters currently are, where there's a fenced rotation that has the compacter right there. Thank you. Um, that fence area will remain a fenced area and we will use it to store snow, um, removal equipment. Plows that get taken off the trucks in the summer and things like that. So we think what we've done here is reuse the areas that we know we can, uh, use effectively on the property and bring in elements of, uh, management that we need to take care of the property better and better serve the tenants and by extension the town. So that summarizes what we've got from before to now. So I'd be interested in hearing any questions, comments.
Madam Chair? Hello?
So, um, this is Kristin. I, I wanted to just, I know we had some staff comments. And Liz, if you want to just, um, offer our staff comments first, just to give kind of a perspective of where we are before we.
Sure. Um, so, so Charles did a great job of kind of just giving an overview. So, um, one of the things that we noticed, um, first and foremost, there are, um, 117 school age children that live in this complex that are 400 units. Um, so it's an active place. Um, and so we, um, we were kind of looking, um, at the kind of, to work towards finding a solution for a pedestrian connection, um, from the covered walkway, um, of the leasing office to Beacon Street where the school buses pick them up. Um, and so I think, um, I know that at our last meeting, Charles, um, you guys were working on, um, coming up with a solution for that or you have. Um, that was kind of our first thought. Um, the other thing, um, uh, the board should know is that the, um, engineering department is, um, doing a redo of the sidewalk along Beacon Street. So, um, I've connected Steve Hildreth and our engineering department who's, um, managing that project. And he's going to be working with the applicant so that they're not duplicating efforts or making sure that everything works together when the time comes. And I think that's starting this summer. I would have to double check on the timing of that. But, um, that is on the table, um, going forward. Um, the other kind of question, um, I had from a site plan perspective is the compactor entrance is right here. Um, and so kind of assuming that these spaces are going to be a little bit more, um, actively used by the tenants to go in and out, um, all the time and perhaps, um, creating backup on the ring road. I'm trying to figure out, um, flow in this area of, um, of the, of the ring road, um, so that it, everything flows well. And then, let me check, anything else? Um, I think that was it. Um, Kristin, is there anything you think I left out and you think you want to add from a staff perspective?
Um, I think the connection, um, from the building to the street in terms of, you know, making sure we can get safe access to the school bus as well as, um, just, you know, the, just tugging through some vegetation there, which you mentioned. And, um, then the basketball court is, is in this location right now. Um, and just as an amenity on site, just trying to work with the applicant just to see if there's another location for either a full or half basketball court, just or another amenity that might, um, be equally, uh, used in the complex. They currently have, um, I think two pools, um, a kind of jungle gym area, um, and a tennis court. So there, there are amenities on site, which is.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, staff. Uh, this is Bill. I'm just stepping in for Brenda right now. So i- if, before I go to the members, um, to ask questions, I'd like to just have the applicant, uh, go over this one more time. And I didn't, just how I looked at this and how, what I heard very quickly. It seems that what we approved last time, um, that this plan is completely different. And I know we spent a lot of time on this the last time. I know we did a couple of sidewalks the last time. So, um, I just, uh, I, I think if you could start and, um, maybe if you can, if you can go just a little slow of the applicant, if you don't mind, um, and to kind of explain, let's say where you're going to take, you originally take and correct me if I'm wrong. Originally where we had spent a lot of time on the, uh, the building that was going to house it, the kids and the compacters is what we're seeing on screen to the lower left. And that appears now to be, it appears to be a parking lot. And that's where the basketball court was and that's where all the construction was being done there. Then there's going to be another building on top of that, which is a, the property leasing building. And then there's going to be another building attached to that, which is the maintenance office. And then, uh, it looks like some snow here. And all of that currently is, that's going to be a garage. Okay. Yeah. With the doors I saw there. So that's currently, is that parking spaces right now or is that the playground?
It's, it's an open area. It's not the playground or parking.
Okay. Just a grassy area. It's not parking spaces currently?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you. You can see the faint lines there. So then the, the compacters, are you keeping the compacters where they were before? Or were you putting them where the contact, Conex containers were?
We are putting them where the Conex containers were.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And the conduct containers, where are they going?
They're going away as was going to be a requirement for the previous approval. So we, we were listening to that certainly.
And, and over where the compacters used to be or currently probably still are, that's going to be where you're going to keep like, uh, snow equipment, removal tractors. Is that correct?
Uh, a, a small Kubota and, um, and some plows that come off the trucks in the summer. That's where we'll, we'll store those. Um, yeah, it's, it's a fenced area with a concrete pad in it that the compacters currently sit on. So when they come out of there, we still have a fenced area with a concrete pad. So it sort of made sense to make use of it.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you, staff. I'm just seeing if, uh, the chair is back. No, why don't we start?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments that they'd like to make?
Uh, this is Paul. Just a suggestion, uh, from a senior senior citizen. This print on here and everything is so small. Rather than putting all that stuff on one page, uh, you know, I know it's going to take a little more paper itself. But in the future, if it was on a single page and larger, I would have a, a less difficult trying to, you know, sort everything out and see what's going on. So, uh. Yeah. Uh, yeah. Also, also being a senior, I'd second Paul's, uh.
I can't.
For the, at least for the primary parts of the planet, it could be like separate detail pages just showing that particular location. That would help a bit. As we're getting older, but in, in the meantime, uh, Madam Chair, I do have a question if I could.
Of course.
Thank you. Uh, I know we spent, as Bill said, we spent a lot of time with this. We did at least one site visit, uh, and, uh, one of the suggestions was, uh, suggestions actually requirement of the, of the approval was to get rid of the Conex container. So I'm glad to see they're doing that. Uh, but at the, at the entrance, uh, in the, uh, what is that? The south, uh, southwest corner, like southwest corner, where, where the new buildings are proposed anyways. Uh, there was also going to be, I believe, a package or mail pickup room. And, and primarily, uh, the reason for my question was a place where the students that are taking the bus to gather and implement weather. Is, is that going to still be handled somehow or another?
Uh, there is, uh, yes. So to answer your question, Member Covino, the, uh, the part of this, uh, building in, at the closest to Beacon Street where it's labeled as a covered walk is actually essentially a covered porch there. Um, so if you look at the architectural drawings, there is a, there is a porch that is the width of the building, um, that 32 feet. Um, not that.
Okay.
One more. There we go. Um, so on the top building, on the top plan, the long one where you see the garage and the side of the building, Beacon Street, right? And that, there you go, that covered area over there is, is the porch. And if you look in the lower right-hand corner of this plan set, uh, oh, yeah, that, well, that's the entry on the right. That lower left-hand, right-hand corner, that one right there, correct. It's now blue. Those four columns across the front there are all covered porch where the kids can gather before they walk up to the street. So yes, we did incorporate the school bus enclosure, uh, protection on this building as well. Because that was critical to us as, as it was to you during that original hearing, uh, process. The, um, the package room, uh, has gone away from the requirement at the moment. Because with, with, we, you know, we've been minimizing, um, having packages coming into the office and the FedEx and UPS drivers deliver them directly to the buildings now, which is much more convenient. Hence minimized our interaction with them. But that component of the, of the proposal, the original proposal has now gone away.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And, and also while I, while I have you, uh, the, uh, the new location of the, of the, uh, compacters is, uh, I'm trying to envision what, I know, uh, when they were at this front location, uh, the closest a butter was concerned about noise and whatever. Uh, so now that they're in the, uh, other corner, that, what's that? The northwest corner, I guess, right? In my mind, I can't picture who the abutters are or are there abutters there? Or is that the other item back there?
They are further away distance wise than the abutter was adjacent to the previously approved compactor location. There, the Peach Orchard Road is up back behind the property. And then there's a cul-de-sac road off to the to the west a little bit. But we own a big piece of property up on that hill there. So the big hill's down back.
Right.
And so this, back in 2007, 2009 and before, when we first started managing the property, this is where the dumpsters were.
Okay. All right. So and these are kind of nestled in that hill that we we talked so much about when you when you were trying to put some additional units up on top, isn't it? So this is kind of tucked right in there, right?
Yeah. If you look closely at this corner, when they did the original construction for the property, they actually sort of piled up a lot of chinking back in here, the large rocks that came out of any blasting they had.
Right, right.
So a lot of the grade change immediately by the road there at this location is is just piled up rocks. That would be very easy to remove.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. All set.
Right. I'll step in for Madam Chair if she's not available this.
I'm sorry, I'm on mute. I was saying, Vice Chair Gaffney, do you have a question or comment? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Yeah, I think with the with the resident that was next to the compactors before, I think this is a much better plan for her where, you know, they will, they'll be farther away. I was just looking on Google Maps right here. And there is that resident that would be backing up there to the compactors now. And again, like you said, they're rare there originally. But I'm not sure if that resident lived there originally, such that the compactors were there when they moved in. Do we know that it looks like 25 Peach Orchard is has been advised of this particular plan? By mail?
All all abutters have been notified with certified mail. For the requirements.
Okay. And because I'm not sure it's all that clear to me. So, you know, when we stepped through this very quickly, if it's clear to the to all the abutters, particularly 25 Peach Orchard, that that's where the compactors are now going. So it might be, you know, as being in a butter on a past application of a planning board for another one, it's important that, you know, we specifically let them know that here's what's going on versus them trying to wade through, you know, some sort of, you know, very small print maps, which may not be clear what's going where. You know, again, that's just my particular thought on that. But I do, I do appreciate the revised plan. I think it's much better than the old one. And the things that we recommended said you couldn't do, but now you're you're back to doing so with regard to the placement of the compactors. I just going to take, I don't have an opportunity here because I'm trying to get a good feel. This is with regard to additional landscape we can put around. The buildings are around the around the existing compact. So I probably want to take another site, a sidewalk there and and see where where things are going to be and what we can do to enhance landscaping in the back or in the front. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Members, I hope.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little confused here. And maybe the applicant said this at the very beginning. And I've just been trying to figure out really what's going on. What caused the change? We all, as been mentioned by a couple of members now, we all spent a lot of time on this. We did a sidewalk. And what precipitated your change and wanted to change the whole plan that we all worked on and and approved? What what happened?
Well, we don't, we don't do that lightheartedly. But we, we're always looking critically at any property we manage as to really the best way we can operate the facility. And and really, you know, we had an approval, but we had an approval with a with a condition. A condition that hadn't been resolved yet. A condition that we had to resolve within a year, I think, of completion of construction. So we decided to step back and rethink the whole thing as opposed to putting ourselves in a timeline under the gun for that where we'd have to come up with some answer that might not be ideal for dealing with those conaxes. And personally and professionally, I feel like, you know, what's happened here is is probably the best case scenario is was commented by a member Gaffney. You know, the compactors are going further away from any abutters in terms of distance. They're also going back to the back corner of the property where the residents are used to them. Something that actually didn't get highlighted here is that this new compactor location, which was the old dumpster location back in '07, '08, '09, and prior to that, there's a set of stairs that comes to that area from the buildings that are sort of down below the the walkway there. That set of stairs was put in during the original renovations in '07, '08, '09 and through the 14, I forget when we finished them. But that set of stairs was meant to give tenants easy walking access to the the trash pickup and drop off location. So when we moved the dumpsters and put them in the compactors in the other corner, it wasn't far away, but those stairs became irrelevant in a way. And I'm sorry that these plans don't don't highlight those. If you were to go to detail B and look at, there's a directional arrow for the roadway there. Next to that is a hatched area. That hatched area is where the stairs come up to the road from the buildings. So that was the long answer. The short answer is that that the requirement of dealing with the Conex containers in a timely fashion made us just step back and think, how can we do this more efficiently and gain a couple more things that we knew we were going to hope for down the road in the property? But we hadn't really resolved how to handle it. So just pushed us in that direction.
Okay. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone, anyone else have any questions, comments? Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, if I may, it would be helpful to hear a little bit about from the board to more specifically what you'd like to see. I heard that there, you may want to be scheduling a sidewalk. Is that something that the whole board would agree that that's something that you'd like to do? I just want to get a little bit more direction for us and the applicant as to what you'd like to see before the next meeting and or do before the next meeting.
Oh, I would like a sidewalk. I would also like to see some renderings, including landscaping and a little bit more detail on the landscaping specifically. You know, I know that we said that abutters were contacted. I just want to make sure to Vice Chair Gaffney's point that 25 Peach Orchard was included in that list.
Madam Chair, this is Brady. I can confirm from the certified abutters list that 25 Peach Orchard Road was notified.
Great, thank you. So we checked that off the list?
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I think the sidewalk would be valuable and also determining who who in fact might be infected, affected by by noise or whatever from the dumpster. Because, as I say, remember, I'm pretty sure those dumpsters are going to be tucked into like a hill almost. So it might be more that the residents of Beacon Village will be more affected as it did the noise, if there is noise, bounces off the hill back towards the apartments. But I, I think a sidewalk would be valuable for at least that reason, if not more. Thank you.
Thank you. So at least those two things, like I said, the renderings, some more detail on, you know, what type of plantings and such landscaping they would be using.
There is a full landscaping plan associated with this package.
Okay. Can we see that, Brady?
That's drainage. There you go.
Yeah, there it is. Do you make that bigger, Brady?
I'm sorry for the correction. Liz has control of the screen.
Oh, sorry. Whoever, somebody make it bigger for my old eye. Thank you.
Better.
Yep.
So that's the building out front, is it not? Landscaping around the building out front or not?
I think that's what it is.
That's, yeah, that's the leasing office.
And if you scan over, can we see what the species are? I know it's hard because I've asked you to make it bigger. And now we can't see that at the same time. But so. Thank you. Okay. So I think other than that, I think we're just looking for a sidewalk. Is there anything else that folks would like to see or they'd like to incorporate? Okay. Staff, do you need anything additional from us or are we ready to move forward?
No, that was helpful. I just wanted to get a little bit more unanimous confirmation on those those aspects. So thank you much.
Great. Thank you. May I have a motion then, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of February 17, 2022.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Pamba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Great. Thank you for, thank you for joining us this evening. We will see you in, well, we'll see you at our site visit. And we'll, staff will schedule that with you.
Great. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You as well.
Thank you. Moving on to minutes. Guys, can you believe we're at page eight, which is almost, we've got two more pages. It's eight o'clock. So I don't know that we've ever had such a short meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
No, I haven't. Paul isn't.
Okay.
Negligence, no.
I haven't. I haven't either, so.
Okay. All right. Well, let's table that till next week. Moving on to other matters. There's a special permit for 43 South Avenue that would like we're still looking for an extension. Go ahead, Liz.
I was going to say, yes. No, you're correct. I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, it's fine. Forty three South is a previous lab building owned by the Ceteris Company right next to, it is within the Curie Campus. It was the third building, 43. They, we approved it as a kind of lab office mix. They're, you know, marketing it, positioning it. It's, it's just the timeline to complete was June of '22. So they know they're not going to complete it before June of '22. So they're just looking for a two year extension. We do expect to hopefully see it sometime within the next year to see some movement on that building. So the building is 187,000 square feet, I believe.
Yes. Yes. Okay. May I have a motion then, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, wait, am I on mute?
Nope.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning board hereby grants a two year extension of time from July 18, 2022 to July 18, 2024 to complete the required special permit improvements pertaining to the reconfiguration of the previously authorized 590,000 square foot office laboratory research and development campus, specifically the 187,000 square, square feet what unbuilt building and associated structure to parking and site improvements at 43 South Avenue as requested by the applicant's attorney in a letter dated January 26, 2022.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Pamba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Great. Next up is 3 Lexington Street. They are looking to confirm that this is or submit this as a public way at this point. And this will be known as Murphy Court. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion in consideration for the work completed in the 3 Lexington Street definitive subdivision. The planning board hereby declares the subdivision to be complete and release all remaining lots from the H1 conditional approval agreement. The planning board also hereby endorses a Form G certificate of performance and a Form Q certificate of completion and release of municipal interest in subdivision performance guarantee for the 3 Lexington Street definitive subdivision and all associated surety. The planning board further recommends favorably on the submission to town meeting on the street acceptance of Murphy Court as a public way.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Pamba.
Yes.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Moving on, did everyone have a chance to look at the budget that was emailed?
Yes. No.
No. Okay. Kristen, is that something we can let people look at it?
Yeah.
Review and then we'll come back to it? Or do you want to do this now?
I would like to. Hold on one second. Sorry, I was getting interrupted. I will share it with you right now and kind of walk through it.
Paul, do you have a copy?
Yes, I did have one question. And it was regarding the part time figure that it seemed to me to have gone up quite a lot. Was that wrong or went up to 4965?
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yep. No, because I'm looking at the TV.
Yep.
And it's not up there.
Okay.
Got about a three second.
It should be there. So we, the, what we wanted to structure in is the long time discussion that we've been having about zoning compliance. And so what you'll see here is an added position for a zoning compliance officer. And that's something that we talked about for a long time. I had a long conversation, well, not long, but a conversation with Mark Dupell in the building department to try to figure out how this position can work between both departments and report to under the planning department. But again, work out in the field, work with the building department, get able to enforce with under some of the powers that they have. We have, we both agreed we need to talk to Lisa Need a little bit more about it as well as Paul Sagarina about the structure in terms of just oversight. But we also know we don't want to do 10 hours in the building department and 10 hours in the planning department and have some confusion about who who's overseeing this person. Especially since, as you guys know, that the planning board is a little bit autonomous from main administration. So so what we have here is a proposal to add a position at Grade 10, which is at the same level position as our assistant planner to add an additional position for zoning compliance officer. And what I really need from this board is agreement on this idea. And if you'll look at the motion, it'll say to have staff and the chairman continue to work to, as we work through the budget process, to figure this out a little bit more. But really, just want to get the thumbs up overall from this group on the concept and kind of to move forward on the draft budget. Because we do need to submit the draft budget to figure out how this works in the bigger picture. So that's why. that's why you're seeing such a large increase. Um, I mean, we have a small budget. Our budget is under is only, uh, I think three thirty-five is our budget without this additional and in terms of salaries was our budget. And now this position, adding a position is certainly going to make it look like our budget, um, is going up quite a bit, and that's why you're seeing that seventeen percent number. Um, but it is something that we have talked about for a long time. As we begin to introduce, I mean, we really need to, as, as you guys have known for a long time, and, um, is understanding more about development services, um, since we're we're, we've done such a great job bringing things in, um, to Burlington and keeping development happening and keeping things fresh, keeping things fresh, but there's a lot of activity and there's a lot of activity going on, both in the single-family subdivision, um, arena, as well as, you know, these, these really large office buildings. Um, so to have someone help oversight, help with oversight of our conditions, enforcement of zoning in general, as, as you guys know, with um, our conditions, but as well as, um, signage and flags and other stuff that we've been talking about quite a bit. Um, and then really just, again, we had a out in the field person that we used to share with engineering some time ago, and that, that has disappeared. Really having someone that's more out in the field, um, would be super helpful and with the office staff we have now, I mean, we're, we're just keeping up with, um, the, the permitting work that is, we're having and as well as just the, you know, we're happy to help all committees in town and we like doing it. Um, but we only have a certain amount of bandwidth. So that is really the proposal you're seeing in front of you is for that. So I'm happy to take any questions and as I work through with.
Because I'm working and you're going to bed. Come on.
As I work through this proposal, I'm happy to having any other feedback with, um, from board members as well.
Madam Chair, Paul.
Please do.
Hello?
Go ahead, Paul.
No, I just want to say, to me, this is doing it a little backwards, is that we're funding it before we discussed it. And usually if we're going to even part-time fund a position and so forth, it comes up in a meeting. I realize it's difficult now that we're all not together and so forth. But it seemed to be previously before we put a position which is going to be permanent that, uh, we discussed it and delineated. So I'm, I'm really not sure this person is a new planning board position or is this, uh, uh, the building department or it's so forth. But that's why I would prefer to hold that if we could. Hello, that's the end.
Uh, before I respond, I, I certainly would like to hear, I know there are a lot of, some other, some of, some others we have talked about it quite a bit, so just I'd like for some of the other board members to weigh in as well, but certainly can answer more on that question.
Sure. Uh, Vice Chair Gaffney and then Barbara, I'll get you next.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll, uh, leave that to Barbara. She had a hand up first, so if you don't mind.
Bye, audience.
Thank you, Bill. Um, I, I hate to disagree with you, Paul, but I wholeheartedly support this. I think we desperately need it. I think it's been an enormous source of frustration to all of us, and I know to our staff that we spend all of this time crafting these decisions with all of these conditions, and then they're not followed up on and we don't have anyone enforcing them. Um, I think we desperately need this position and my only other comment is I would love to be involved as the chair and our director work on job descriptions and figuring out all of those details. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Uh, Vice Chair Gaffney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, the only comment that if we look back at the budget, so that's a, it's a part-time job, half-time, is that the, what I saw or?
It's proposed right now as a full-time position at, um, grade ten, which is the similar grade as the assistant planner position.
Can I just look at the budget again? Because I wasn't, the math wasn't adding up to me there for a second. Wouldn't mind bringing that up. All right. In the next, the previous page, I think, right? Oh, the next page, yeah. Okay. Oh, okay. Okay. I see it over there. Yeah. Okay. No, I'm good now. Yep. Thank you. Thank you, man. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam, Madam Chair, Ernie?
Please.
Good. Uh, thank you. Uh, I know, I know there's, 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 this is a position we've talked about for quite a while and I, I was on the board along with Paul when, when the, we did have a, uh, a person that, uh, I think his title was subdivision inspector, but he actually, uh,
Yes.
Now, he went around, right, Paul? Yeah. He went around and, and, and was able to, to look at things, uh, and, and try and make sure that they were done according to the, to the plan that we had approved and if they were. And it came in very handy because every once in a while there were changes that had to be made in the field and he was able to help coordinate that with, uh, with planning staff, uh, you know, minor changes. We're talking about, you know, uh, somebody was running a pipe and piece of ledge and it had to be moved two or three feet and that kind of thing. But, uh, at that time it was, uh, I thought it was a half-time position where, uh, was shared with, as Kristen said, engineering. And, and the reason I'm bringing that up is because there are a couple of other positions which, uh, various committees have talked about needing that have been bandied about, one being a transportation coordinator, the other one being somebody, uh, to deal with housing, affordable housing, uh, and there was actually a third one that slips my mind right now. And I was wondering, Kristen, uh, uh, since you're proposing this, is, is this something that you think could be a three-quarter position? Or a half-time position and be shared with something else or, or would the, would the abilities of, uh, of, uh, those two positions not, uh, not be compatible? Do you know what I mean? It would have to be somebody obviously who knew something about it. For instance, if it was shared as with a position of a transportation coordinator, uh, the person would have to be versatile in both fields and, and is that practical? I'm just talking right now. Kristen, maybe?
If I could find a housing expert, transportation expert, GIS expert and development inspector, I would hire that person in a heartbeat. Um, I guess overall, I feel like the relationship between our department and the building department is so critical in terms of oversight and, and working jointly with that, that group. Um, and being out in the field that maybe, but I certainly don't want to start off with having a position that is so, they're just really, I mean, I think if you wanted to have a housing planner and a transportation planner, you're both, you're talking about a planning position, but when you're talking about zoning compliance officer and the planning position, are, are you hiring a planner to do zoning compliance? Are you, what are you, are you doing, hiring someone to work with the building department to kind of? Uh, it's, it's something we need to work through, but I don't think it's a quick and easy pushing those positions together. That, that's, I appreciate it. I mean, there's definitely needs for additional expertise that we've been talking about for years. Um, but
Well, then.
I'm happy to talk through it a little bit more if it's possible, but I don't want to just quickly say that, oh, we'll create this one position to do five jobs. So.
Okay. So, so you're pretty confident that that person would, uh, really be able to be occupied full-time doing this? And, uh, also along with that, why do you think it belongs in the planning department rather than in the, uh, uh, building department?
Um, I mean, it, from, I know, I know Bren, uh, Barbara, when we first sat down with the building inspector and kind of unders, you know, what they're doing and what they want to focus on and our permits and our conditions needing to get more of a focus there. Um, and honestly, in conversation with building department, they'd prefer it under us. So if they'd prefer it under us, it would make sense.
I, I mean, I, I may know, may actually know the answer to some of these. I'm just trying to bring out the, the points too, but thank you. Thanks.
Oh, um, yeah, no, I, I, I think there's, um, you know, I think we, we can work on this a little bit more, but, um, you know, I'm not proposing it as a really high-level position. If I, if I was proposing at a higher level position, I would, we could require more higher level, um, education and experience, but we're, we're really not. We're starting at more of an entry-level position to, to work up toward different things. So, um, it's.
Okay.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Um.
Members, hang up?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just want to echo Member LaRue's comments. I'm wholeheartedly in support of this and I think it's, there's a desperate need for it and, um, I'm very happy to see it uh, in the budget, whether it's a half-time position, three-quarter, full-time, just as long as we get it. I think we need it desperately and this will affect literally everything we do. And, um, a lot of times we sit through these hearings and we feel like our hands are tied after we make our decisions and this will just greatly impact everything we do. So one hundred percent fully support. Anything you need me to do to help, I will, you know, I'm in. So love it. Thanks, Madam Chair.
And, and my only other comment is just, I think this needs to be a full-time position. I really do. I, I don't think this is a part-time position.
Okay. Thank you, Member Pamba. Oh, it looks like maybe. Member Pamba?
Yep, yep. Apologize, I was trying to unmute and it wasn't working on me yet. Um, I, I just want to, same thing. I want to just express my support for it. I, I had talked to Kristen and the staff in there uh, about it and I, I absolutely feel that we need it in some, in some shape or form. Um, I'm not sure that we've completely identified everything that, you know, the, the scope that, that this position should be covering, but I, but I do think that it's a much more appropriately coming from the planning department because I think it, it also needs to be an onsite kind of a field person for the planning, for the planning department, because, you know, these site plans that we have are somewhat sophisticated and I think sometimes we're missing out, we're missing on, 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 uh, actually getting the proper review uh, when the site plan, plans are implemented. We're not really, we're missing it at that point in the game as well as further on when the site plans are completed and, and there are violations. I think there's is also, you know, we need someone who's going to be versed at both of those areas and can be able to handle it at each step and each level of the, of the process. So, um, I think it's long overdue. Um, and I think we've experienced over, you know, the, the past few years, some instances where it really could have, could have, uh, you know, headed, headed off some problems that ended up happening. So, um, a hundred percent in favor of it.
Right. Uh, Vice Chair Gaffney?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just when, when the, the other members are talking, I just had a thought. Uh, and I'm sure that staff looked into, they're looking at, what is, what do other towns do? How do they, how do they do that? Do they have this type of position reporting into the planning board or, but we have someone that worked for the town now that worked for another town that seemed to have been effective in their, uh, compliance of, of theirs. So how, uh, you know, is, is this the best practice or how do they, how do the other folks do it?
Um, so, uh, thank you for the question. No, we, um, we have been looking at different towns and different, um, zoning compliance officers, zoning enforcement agents. Um, and looking at where they sit. Some sit with the building department, some sit independently under community development as a whole, as development services. Um, so there's different models. We've been trying to cobble together a couple of different job descriptions to kind of see what works. Um, and that's something that we're still working on and again, want to work together, um, along with the chair and you guys, just to, to really get that job description right. Um, first things first of kind of allocating, giving a message that we want to be allocating the dollars so we can start at least shifting around expectations. Um, that we're, we'll be, um, looking at that. Um, but it's a little bit different. And then as you guys, as you guys are aware, um, the fact that we sit under you versus sitting under administration is also a little bit different. Um, and understanding the management structure there. So, um, I don't think there's, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, but there's also some nuance within Burlington that we just want to be sure that works, um, under the leadership structure that we have here. But we'll be sending, um, as I said, we've cobbled some things together, so we'll be sending around some, um, options and some things that other towns are doing for, um, uh, the position.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Please.
Yep. So Kristen, when you do that, I, I, you're probably going to try to identify some sort of a job description, but have you, have you pulsed, you know, in this, in this, in the economy we have right now, I'm not, I'm just not sure what the pay scale, what you're going to draw in with the, you know, with the pay scale if, uh, if it's not right up there with, you know, other towns and, and similar positions in other places, you know? Um, so is that something you've pulsed as well when you came up with the, with the salary on it or?
Um, yeah, I mean, we've looked at kind of where it's certainly not a director position. In some places it's, um, higher level because it's there's inspection services for multiple between, you know, building engineering and planning. There's, there's more oversight and more, um, kind of specific science training, but we feel comfortable that, you know, whether the, if the position starts at step one or a couple of steps into that step ten, that we can probably find, um, find a, a match.
Okay. So is that, when you say a couple of steps into, to step ten, that would be a difference in a salary as well, right? Or no?
That would be, and it's something that, um, we probably should talk about, but we wanted to try to find that grade. To Ernie's question, if we were looking for someone to be a transportation planner, housing planner and do this, the salary is too low. Um, we'd have to be looking more in the senior planner range than, um, than the assistant planner doing just this particular oversight.
Right.
That's, you know, as we work through the budget process, that, that might be something that comes up and we can certainly, when we set the draft budget, we can kind of send some ranges as to what we're looking at. Um, and I can work on that if it's something that you guys are, are supportive of.
I for one would be. I, I just want to make sure if we do it, it's done the right way and you know, we're not next year going back and saying, oh, this is not going to work and, you know, we need to add another twenty thousand to it or, you know, and, and we, we kind of lose a little credibility that way as well, you know?
Yeah, well, I'm, yeah, let me see. I could probably put together, but I, I think it needs to sit somewhere between the assistant and senior level, um, senior planner, planner level for sure, because you're not talking about a director position. So, I mean, I can put together one or two options to talk through, but.
Okay.
I, I think overall, we're, we're in the wheelhouse. But it's a good question. It's hard to find good people and you want to make sure you can find good people.
Right. It's getting harder and harder to find good people in this, you know what I mean? If, you know, and that's the problem, you know?
Right.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Paul.
Madam Chair, Paul. Again.
Go ahead.
Yeah. No, since I brought this up, that's why I thought that it really should, should have been an agenda item. You know, where we go through, we're, we're, we're treating this now as an agenda item. You know, we discuss all the aspects of salary, where does it fit and so forth. And for that reason, I would almost rather see it postponed or whatever and put on the agenda at our next meeting so that we could thoroughly vet it and be ready when January comes, the next meeting, town meeting before then, to be ready uh, with a clear, uh, understanding of what the position is, who they refer to, what the necessity for it is and, uh, uh, and, you know, just insert it as a, a new position under the planning board who would, uh, report to the director and be an inspector, et cetera, or whatever. But that was, that was why I brought it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, does anyone else have any questions or comments?
So what I really need from the board is consensus on that we want, yes, we want to keep talking about this. And generally that there's, I mean, what I need to submit to, um, the accounting office is really just an expectation that there will, that we're looking for this additional position. that we're looking for this additional position somewhere within the range of. Um, because we need to start adding a number to it, so there's some planning around it. But we certainly, as a group, can continue to talk about the development of the position. Um, so, I mean, if you wanted to modify the motion just slightly, and that use, what does it say now? Um, that the planning board, you don't necessarily approve, but support the submission of the draft budget as presented, and we can just continue keeping it as a discussion item. If the others would feel more comfortable with that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead. I actually share Joe's concern that we, I don't know if we can get the right person for this salary, and I want to make sure, as he said, that we don't, um, box ourselves in with too low a salary and not be able to attract the right person. So, once we put this into the budget and get it approved, we can't go back and say, oh, we couldn't find anybody for that amount. So I think we, I want, I think we should approve tonight that we need to move forward, but I'm not sure we have the right number. If you're confident, Kristen, that we have the right number, then okay, but if you are, if you're, um, lowballing it because you think we're not gonna get approval for something more, now's the time for us to try and really get this done and get it done correctly.
Message received, and I will definitely look at, um, either a grade up or a higher level step within the grade.
Okay, thank you.
Because I'm not, I, I, I'm, you know, I, I know a lot, but.
And obviously, if something fantastic comes around and, and they're, this is the right salary, that's great. I'm not saying you go out and, you know, offer people the most we can possibly afford, but if, let's have a, a range for you, so you have some flexibility.
Okay. We'll work on putting that together, but I, again, I do need to get something in draft form, um, at least a range, um.
Yeah.
To, um, accounting, just to kind of have an idea of what we're looking at.
Okay, do you need this submitted by? Kristen, when do you need this submitted by?
Uh, it, budgets were, budgets are due, um, draft budgets are due, because they want to start putting together the, the book, so.
Okay.
Um, I think we need to be submitting, I need to put the cover sheet together. Um, and I need to be at least submitting a range for discussion, and we can, um, with the chairman, I can get that draft submission squared away a little bit more, and we can keep this open.
Great. Uh, may I have a motion, please?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move, uh, the language that Kristen suggested, the planning board hereby supports uh, FY twenty twenty-three budget as presented by the planning director and directs the director to continue to work with the chairman through a budget review process. Is that good enough to get it going, I think?
Well, just the chairman, or do you want to keep this as a discussion item at this level as well?
Um, I, I think that, once we make some headway, yeah, I think that, you know, the.
Come back and tell us what's going on, yeah, right.
I think we need to micromanage the process, but I think we should keep everyone apprised.
Okay, sounds good.
Second.
Vice Chairman, Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Cliff Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Españo?
Yes.
Member Pemba?
Yes.
Member LaRue?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Great. Um, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, next, uh, meeting, there'll be a joint land use committee, um, zoning bylaw review and planning board meeting. Uh, that's on February seventeenth. Um, we will have a six to seven PM start with, uh, zoning bylaw and land use. So, I'll make sure I get a sitter this time, so I don't have my kids coming in every two minutes and yelling at them. Sorry about that, folks. Um.
Right.
Yep, so the groundwater separation bylaw, uh, the, the, the planning department has put forward a two-foot separation requirement from the basement, um, from any basement or slab from groundwater as part of, um, excuse me, as part of a department effort to address stormwater impacts to neighborhoods, uh, relating to new construction and substantial construction in the R O district. So this will open up at, um, at our next meeting. Um, don't think that we have any correspondence or reports, um, so let's, let's. Can I make a quick comment on that one?
Sure, of course.
Um, I fully support this, but I also am hoping that we're also, we are, in addition to this, looking at other things in our rules and regs regarding crossing wetlands and filling wetlands, because we're, we're gonna be seeing more and more of that, and I think we need to review our rules and regulations in that area, so just that comment I wanted to make.
So, um, as, that's why it's a multiple department effort. The, um, conservation commission is moving forward some stormwater regulations. We will be bringing up the, um, subdivision rules and regulations after town meeting, so you'll see those probably later in March. Um, to get at all of these, it's just, you know.
I understand.
At a time, this is the first of a dimensional in zoning requirement that we're finding is in a lot of places, and it's not here, and it's, um, it's actually builders that are not building in Burlington as much, or like, really, you guys don't have it? So it, it's definitely something that we wanted to um, start to consider and work through all of those other regulations that really are affecting, as we've talked at the last meeting and other meetings, just the single-family home construction, which are just what we don't see. We don't get a lot of data when they, they go in, so. This will start, and that'll open at the next meeting with some other zoning. We just wanted to let you know, because we submitted it on behalf of you guys, and we'll send you a draft after this.
Great.
Good.
Thank you. Um, Sculpture Park Committee, do you have anything additional that you want to add that we didn't talk about already?
No, I think I already said that at the beginning of the meeting, so hopefully we'll have exciting news for you in the months ahead.
Okay, looking forward to it. Um, Housing Partnership, do we have anything to report in that neck of the woods?
Yes, something that I, oh, sorry.
No, because I had Barbara, my bad.
Oh, sorry. No, I just, I just think the community should be aware, um, of something that's a little unusual, that the Housing Partnership is working on, which is, um, they're in conjunction with Saint Veronica's and Catholic Charities, um, is trying to assist in finding housing for, for refugees, um, and I think it's a very, um, exciting and worthwhile project, and Liz has been doing a lot of work on it, so hopefully she can say, speak more about it, um, but I think it's really important for our community to know that we're working on something like this. So Liz, could you expand on it a little more?
So I actually don't know as much about that, Barbara, I'm sorry. I've been working on the housing needs assessment mostly with the Housing Partnership with M A P C, um, which I did want to touch on, but it's amazing. I haven't, I didn't know that they were, um, working to bring refugees, and I think that's a fabulous, um, program.
Yes, what we've been doing is we're reaching out to landlords in the area, trying to figure out if we have any affordable housing available, and then the housing would be paid for through Catholic Charities and Saint Veronica's for the first year, and there's other support structures being put in place to support any refugee families that come to live in Burlington for at least that first year, to get them situated and, and sort of give them a, a good start in their new community. So it's a multi-faceted effort, um, and I just think it's a really nice thing, and I, I hope our, I wanted our community to know about it.
Very good.
Barbara, does that, uh, is, is, is that priority over senior housing, or?
Um, it, it's, it's not the same as senior housing. We're looking for affordable units that would be paid for by the archdiocese. Well, not the archdiocese, Catholic Charities and Saint Veronica's. It's not senior housing.
No, but I'm saying from a priority standpoint, is the Housing Partnership, is, is it putting that, uh, the refugee housing above that of senior housing?
No, no.
No, no. I would not say that we're prioritizing it over senior housing, not at all. It's an additional effort, and it probably will be, um, you know, probably only one or two families, and, uh, for a limited amount of time as well.
Wasn't it aimed towards Afghan refugees at this moment? Is that what I'm saying?
I.
I thought, because I thought it was, uh, it mentioned, uh, people who were, were no longer welcome in the country because they'd been helping out the United States, and da, 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 that kind of.
It's just focused towards Afghan refugees.
Worthwhile project.
Yes.
And, Madam Chair, if I make kind of my side of the Housing Partnership, that I kind of expert on, um, is the, um, housing needs assessment that we've been, um, I've been working with the Housing Partnership on, along with, um, M A P C, who are consultants. And at our recent meeting, um, earlier this week, um, we got a huge data dump in the form of a really huge slide deck with all sorts of data from, um, from M A P C, and, um, they've made that recording available, so I'll, I'll send that out to you. Um, the kind of next step that we're looking for is M A P C is gonna send out kind of, um, an invitation, and what we're really, what the project is looking for is, um, for people in the town who are living in the town to provide, um, to provide us with kind of, they're looking for people to join focus groups to talk about, um, kind of their housing journey in Burlington, and um, what, how, how finding a home for them has been, how, um, you know, just, just that journey. Um, and so, um, if you guys know of anybody, or just think about your group, um, for who you know, um, might be a good person to talk to about that, um, I'll be sending that along to you as guys as well, if, um, you can think about that, and, um, for anybody else, email planning@berlington.org for those listening, um, and I can give you more information on that. But it's coming along well, and, um, yeah, and there's a lot of great data that we've gotten out of it. So some surprising, some not surprising, but, um, it's all great. It's good, it's good stuff. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, Recreation Commission, do we have anything that we'd like to discuss on that front?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, discussion at the last Recreation Commission was, um, that they're gonna redo the basketball courts at Simons Park. Um, and as a result of that, uh, they're gonna be putting new lights up, and, uh, they're gonna be losing two parking spaces over kind of on the east side, and I think they're gonna be replaced over on the west side of the parking lot. And Kristen, do you have more detail on that? I think they said you, they were talking to you about those, those two parking spaces, through the light stations that they were gonna put up?
Um, I don't have a lot. I think I do, I, I think I did receive a sketch plan, but overall, I didn't have, um, a lot of concerns about, about the, um, the site plan change there. Um, but I apologize, I don't have it prepared to bring up.
Okay. And do, do they, do they need to come before us for that, or is that just a matter of course?
Um, I think I had advised that they just needed to do an insignificant change, so they needed to go through the chair. It wasn't something that was structural enough that, um, unless you felt different, or the chair felt different, I, I haven't discussed it with the chair yet.
Yeah, I just, uh, if everybody wants to drive by there a little bit and see, you know, since they're gonna be spending a, a substantial amount of money on that, is there something that, you know, we should probably do there, whether it's the fence or landscaping around there, or whatever the, uh, the planning board is, you drive by, um, just take a look.
Which, which tennis courts built?
Sorry, the basketball courts.
At which field? Basketball courts at Simons, and, okay. Right along that street, you mean?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think the fencing is a little older, even if it was just, I don't know, did they paint that stuff? Can they paint it to make it spiff it up? Um, but, uh, really, what about the, uh, party? That's, is that still there? I drive by it every day, and I feel like it's, I don't know, does it need to be there?
You don't approve of outdoor plumbing?
Well, there is a bathroom at the, at the park, so I don't know. Just a thought.
Yeah.
I mean, if it doesn't have to stay there, I think it would be nice.
No, that's good. It's, it's a good point, and you know, anything, anything else you guys think of, just, uh, let me know, and I'll communicate that back to the, uh, the rectifier. But that's a good point, yeah, and if, um, you know, if, if the, the, the party has to stay there, maybe there's some landscaping around it, or, or, you know, something like that to shield it, but I'm not, you know, uh, uh, the basketball player's gonna walk up the hill to the, to the bathroom up there, are they gonna find the nearest bush? So, you know, I think that.
Yeah. There's no bush right now.
Right, exactly, so let's, let's, um.
If you, if you put the landscaping though, you might not need to.
Yeah, just put a bunch of bushes, put a bunch of bushes over there. And where you can't fly shorts, so you won't be, uh.
Are you assuming that women don't play basketball, gentlemen?
No, I, I would, I would say, I would play one with my daughter, she would, she would completely destroy me, so I don't, I'm not saying that.
For the record, I'm not endorsing outside.
This is a new destruction for plenty more discussions, a new, a new direction.
All right, moving on.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Freeze mess.
Um, let's talk about the Economic Development Committee. Mike, I'll let you speak to that, because I've been doing a lot of talking tonight.
Um, the Economic Development Subcommittee was, um, presented with an exploratory presentation on the Rogers Piano Site, one thirty-one Cambridge, for a new, uh, mixed-use, um, residential and retail, um, for building, and it's a lot better than the last one that we saw that was huge. It's smaller in scope and, uh, fits, uh, the profile a lot better, so hopefully those, um, talks proceed, and it eventually works its way to the planning boards, so. Um, first glance of the plans, they look very exciting and very, uh, very cool, so hopefully we'll see that soon. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike. I think one, one important thing to note on that is that, um, you know, should that plan move forward, those will be condos and not apartments. You know, I think a lot of folks were very concerned that we were adding, um, another apartment complex, and so condos, I think, would be, um, a great addition to the community.
So that project will open at your next meeting, um, at the six to seven meeting.
Great, great.
Wow.
Um, Transportation Committee?
Uh, Transportation Committee, uh, at our last meeting, actually, which was last night, we had a presentation from, uh, uh, a group that has an app out, both iOS and in Android app called, uh, Pogo, which is basically, uh, a way to get people, uh, to carpool, uh, and, and we had originally, uh, targeted, uh, high school and maybe middle school after-school activities, where some of the students, one of the biggest complaints was that they couldn't, uh, participate in some of the, uh, after-school activities because they didn't have a way to get home, so, uh, we reached out, or one of the members reached out to this, this application that they were aware of, uh, and we had a presentation, which was, it was very interesting, yeah. And, uh, I think it's, actually, that whole meeting should be available on BCAT's YouTube page, so if you're interested, it, it's probably, uh, probably worth looking at. I mean, we probably spent a good hour on it, maybe a little more, so. That's what I have from Transportation at the moment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. What about, um, Z B R C signage committee?
Hmm, Z B R C signage committee, we're still plugging along, uh, and, uh, we're making slow but sure progress. We've got some, um, two articles in front of town meeting, uh, this go around. One of the things that, uh, made us pull back with adding, uh, additional articles is, uh, uh, the town center slash three A committee being up in the air, and it having design review uh, recommendations to the planning board, and possibly to whoever would be granting the sign permits in the town center, uh, that doesn't exist anymore, so kind of pulled back on that, and, uh, this, this board, the planning board, had talked about re-instituting maybe as a committee under the planning board, or a subcommittee under the planning board, uh, since it was originally under the Board of Selectmen. And I believe that if we don't move fast enough in doing something like that, the Z B R C committee, or somebody else, will try and present to town meeting a change to the general bylaw that may put a committee in place to do that, and so if, if we want to still have that kind of control, we probably should move on.
Okay. Um, Steph, can you pursue that?
Um, I can. I think there was, um, a conversation, and forgive me if I'm not remembering correctly, but, um, between, um, Nick Priest and, um, you, Brenda, the chair, as to reconstituting three A Town Center Committee.
Yes.
Just kind of see how we might want to be doing that joint, because originally it was a joint committee with, um, well, actually, it wasn't a joint, necessarily joint, it was set up through the selectmen, um, and should it be more of a joint committee, has really been the conversation, so. Um.
Yeah, let me.
And, um, but want to make sure that we're continuing some of the channels we've already started.
Yeah, I think, um, we'll set something up with the three of us, um, over the next week or two, and, um, let's connect with Nick and see what his schedule looks like. And um, let's connect with Nick and see what his schedule looks like. Great. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Eight fifty-one, folks.
Most new adjourned.
Second.
Thank you.
Yes. Vice Chairman Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond? Member Covino?
Sure, yes.
Member Spahoe?
Yes.
Member Pemba?
Yes.
Member LaRue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Folks, have a great evening.
Night, everybody.
Good night. Good night, everybody.
Be well.